You know, part of the... we're concerned about our customers' safety when they're internal to our lot and how we move them.
and how we move their vehicles safely and provide opportunities for them to fuel it the way it's most convenient. So ninety, non ethanol will be at the diesel islands.
Will there also be non ethanol at the other islands as well, or just that one?
There will be at least one of the other islands.
One of the other and the diesel.
Possibly both.
Okay, great, great.
And also keep in mind, you recall that we widened the drive on the corner side, so the northeast corner side is thirty-five foot wide. That was also a piece if the trailer does go around that other side, we did models to make sure that the vehicles can get around the building as a whole.
Where are you, where are you talking again, I'm sorry?
Where the sidewalk comes in, there's actually, that widens out to thirty-five feet to take a wider berth.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. Yeah, go ahead Sandy.
Do you know if the DOT is going to put additional signage to south? Because there is kind of a little bit of a blind corner there, and I think people don't always know that there's going to be a stop sign. And now they're not going to know there's a driveway where potential semis coming in and out.
I could check, I don't think they would.
Because the speed limit's forty-five, then all of a sudden you're, you know, at a stop.
We'll try to see what the, that'll be, that's probably part of their review right now. So what we were told is it's actually in front of like three or four different departments, and I'm sure one of them is site safety. So we'll check to see if they're going to require any signage. If they do, absolutely, we'd be happy to put that up as part of the process.
Okay, any other?
I got, I got one question. Your sidewalks, you're just showing one coming in from the road.
Yes.
You don't have them along the road on each side? There won't be sidewalks there?
Mainly because we didn't see a destination to do so. So that's something we were going to be talking about tonight.
Yeah, let's, we'll do that, I get that later down on my list, yeah, okay. Let's, we'll talk about sidewalk and landscaping, whatever, in the future. So anything else on the ingress egress, traffic pattern off or on the site, board members, anything?
I, I still think that that, you know, across from Conlon Road there, it's just so hard to get out of. I don't know how, I just don't see how it's going to work, but.
You mean heading west, you're saying getting out of there and heading west?
Just the traffic and, you know, twice a day, in the morning and in the afternoon is already a colossal mess. It's hard to get off Conlon Road as it is. So I just see people, knowing people, cutting through that parking lot, right? And they're going to go right through here, and they're going to, you know, they're going to go right through the other side.
How's that, so which direction is the problem to getting out to Conlon?
I just see that whole side as an issue, only because I live, you know.
Do you see the issue is, is people would use the rear of our facility as a cut through to avoid the red light?
Yes, absolutely.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I do. Because I think people are in a hurry and, right, they're trying to get their children to school, I'm one of them, and trying to get to work on time. And so I just see that as being a definite cut through.
Yeah.
Which I just think could be a safety concern for not only the customers in your parking lot, but then, you know, for the, coming out the other side, but.
Do you feel that that's, so that the delay is at the signal itself?
I'm sorry?
Is the delay the signal itself, that it's not enough traffic flowing through this signal at a certain time?
Yeah, it backs up in the morning when the parents, none of the kids drive, go to where the school buses, the parents take the kids to school.
There's one way to, you know what I mean, like most of the traffic.
Which, which direction, yeah, that's what I'm wondering. So when, what's backing up, actually? The cars on, going eastbound, Ridge Road around East Shore Drive?
Wouldn't you, I mean.
No.
Both, wouldn't you say both? I mean, I think I would say both, yeah.
So why I'm asking that question is, is it an optimization issue for the signal itself? That's what we can, we can ask, actually ask DOT to look into that? Or is it just that it's just the total volume and that?
I think it's a total volume for that intersection, if you will. Which I don't know how to remedy, but I just wanted to bring it.
Yeah, there's no right light, I mean, there's no turning right on the light, there's none of that. So it backs all the way up.
Yeah, and you're.
Past your driveway, and, and beyond, because they're just waiting for that light.
And you're going to be praying.
You're talking about the northbound right turn, so like if you're coming up East Shore Drive, there's no right turn?
Both, both, thirty-four B and coming up East Shore Drive.
So you're like praying, like, please let me out this morning, and the five will go by, and then you might get out. But it's just gonna, I just foresee that being.
Does the DOT have the ability to alter that light based on time?
Yeah, of course, they can always optimize the traffic signal, and they can do it based on the time of day, too. That's why I was asking that question. So I can, I can talk to the traffic engineer to see what they have an opportunity to do.
Can you discuss that with DOT and express that the board, some of the board is concerned about the certain periods of time and the traffic gets backed up there?
Yeah, that's why I was asking those questions. I kind of, I'm going to try to get up here, so is it just the mornings, or is it?
So I have to bring, you know, seven forty-nine, I think, is when middle school and high school starts. But then, you know, fast forward a little bit, and nine o'clock, I believe, is when the elementary school starts. So I think there's like two waves, but I'm only a part of one, so to be honest with you, I.
But it's only the mornings, though, right?
And the afternoons, yeah.
And the afternoons, well, going that's away.
Yeah.
Well, certainly around four thirty-five o'clock.
If, yeah, you're, I'm just waiting, the light forever, so.
I mean, ideally for everyone, if there was a right-hand turning lane, both off of.
We asked, we asked them to look into that, and they really did not.
I mean, I think everyone here would agree, even if, even if the store didn't go in, I think the community would love to see a right-hand turning lane. You know, go heading north and going east as well as heading, coming from school and heading south. It really needs a turning lane, in fact, people turn all the time illegally. And one of these days, somebody's going to get hurt there.
Well, so we did offer to look into widening that as a separate right turn lane, and they really did not find that warranted, the terminology. I think that's going to have to be something that's kind of town initiated, and it's, to be honest, it's tough to get DOT to agree to things like that. But we're not developing that corner, so there's room if you ever need it, we can help you out there. But I can check with the, with the traffic engineer who actually looks at the signal timing, and I can see what they can do. I'll even ask him for a copy. Back in the day, I did some traffic signal timing analysis. I worked a lot with Steve Ferrante, you probably heard that name.
The additional return window there is mornings are also fairly heavy traffic for salt trucks. And if they're going from a standing start, that means the fourth or fifth person in line gets to stop for that light again.
Yep, yep, on there.
So that's why, that part of that, that's part of the whole equation. It's not just people carrying their kids to school.
Have you spoke with the DOT every, haven't you, on that intersection in the past?
If you're asking me questions, I'll answer, but this is your meeting, but go ahead and ask the question. So DOT, that's what the question is, when they were paving East Shore Drive, I asked them, can you put in a right-hand turn? Can you, or at least say, this is a shoulder, can you put, can you put stripes there? The answer was no, as far as that goes.
And they didn't give you any reason, it was just a no?
DOT doesn't give you reasons.
Okay.
They just give you one word answers. And I read the last study was done in two thousand nineteen, the road study, because that was the same traffic study that we used at the Town Senator Committee when we were looking for, for traffic patterns. They gave us the updated one using two thousand nineteen data.
Okay, which is reasonable. Thankfully, the two thousand nineteen study wouldn't note the decrease in traffic from the west due to the bridge being closed.
We were frankly disappointed, we expected a more uptight because they knew we were paying for it.
Well, when was that done?
The one I believe that we were reviewing from the field, they asked, they were doing the traffic study, was done in two thousand nineteen. And we looked at it, I believe, late last year in two thousand twenty-one.
See, see, traffic hasn't actually gone back to pre-pandemic numbers. So what they, what they've been doing is supplementing traffic data, actual counts with self-own data, to try to, or they just go back to twenty nineteen or pre-pandemic traffic. So that's probably why they did that.
I would hate to, I'd hate to see them use one based on two thousand twenty-one or twenty-two, because that, that road's been closed down there. So we wouldn't be getting a true picture.
Okay, so Jamie, we left it with you, you're going to speak with the DOT about the timing and the concerns about the traffic backed up, et cetera, and then get back to us on what the conversation has been.
So it sounds like you've had some conversations before.
There's a chance I can get.
Sure, yes, please, yes, no, yep, go ahead.
These are ongoing conversations with them. We tried various speed limit reductions, the one coming from the top of the hill at Ridge Road coming down to Myers. And there was extensive analysis done there, multiple snapshots of car crashes, the answer was no. Because they didn't feel it was appropriate. The only, I recommended to them is that, give us all that writing, so when the lawsuits hit, we'll have enough data there for you. And hopefully the survivors and the loved ones who die, at least will have some, some consultation.
If there's any chance I can get a copy of the traffic study, I can review it before contact.
I would, I wish you well, I would ask you to do your own work and contact and give it to you.
Yeah, no, if it, more data, the better.
Okay, okay, let's, let's move, let's move on here. The future charging stations, can you elaborate a little more on that?
We just, what the plan was there for EV is to build an area, build the EV charging locations in an area that's expandable.
Okay.
And it's also consumer friendly.
Okay.
And the thought was, by getting them away from the building, we can get them in a place that is shaded. We may be able to have, you know, benches there, maybe a couple of tables. You know, it can be a comfortable area, you know, for that person that may be on site for twenty, twenty-five minutes, whatever that EV charge time is. By moving them to where we've shown them here, it's also a very accessible area still for the person to get to the front entrance to the building.
How, how will you determine when you put those in? What's going to be factored?
That's something that we're continually looking at. We're exploring options with different grant programs with the state and New York. We've applied for several, and we're going to look to, you know, apply for this site if it's approved under an application to put in a bank of charging stations.
So you anticipate that might be done within the next three years?
Yeah.
Five years?
No, I, five for sure, I would see it sooner rather than later. You know, it may start out where we just fund it as a single point or double charging point.
Okay.
And we provide the room to expand, hopefully under a larger program.
Right.
As the need for those grows.
Right, and that's my question in expansion, what if, what if we're looking at ten years down the road, or twenty years down the road? What if you need ten or fifteen there? You don't think so?
Well, if you listen frankly, if, if the automotive manufacturers plans and the governance come to fruition, at some point in future, our canopies, those fueling points may be EV charging points.
Okay.
But until then, this location allows us to expand that without affecting the flow of the site.
Okay, so you think that's adequate for the next five years, seven years?
This positions us for growth.
Okay, we don't know what the future's going to bring, right? You think that's adequate for the future, and it's all going to be your call on when those go in? Not the planning board's call or the town's call?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so there's room right there for, that space is all necessary. I mean, there's a lot of room right there.
But you still, you have two already next to the store, right?
They're still shown, but the two next to the store will probably, they will end up being out where the bank is shown. We're not going to provide for the electricity requirements that these things take in two locations on the property.
Okay.
All right, so wait a minute, so, so as the store is built, there won't be any electric?
It will be out where the bank is, not the ones that are depicted next to the building.
I think, board members, I think we wanted to see those at this point in time, no?
No, what he's saying, I think, is that they are going to put them in now, but they're not going to put them in next to the building. They're going to put them in in their alternate location.
That's correct.
Oh, so when, when you get to CO, there will be a place for, oh, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
At least two.
At least two, I got you, okay, I misunderstood.
So the ones up next to the building, they're shown, they're just not going to be.
That's right.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Anyone? All right, let's move on.
Any, any solar panels for the site, help?
No.
Next on my list is lighting and noise. You're not going to have talking gas pumps, correct? You know what I mean, some of those. Is that correct? No? Is there going to be TV screens on the gas pumps?
They will have TV screens on.
And will there be volume on those screens?
They will have volume, that will be controlled.
Okay. I guess, and my concern is, how far, how far is that volume going to reach? Is it going to, across the road to the restaurant, or the neighbors on the other side?
Absolutely not, it'll be contained to the fueling area.
So if I'm on the other side of the road, I won't be able to hear anything on those, on the, the gas pumps, as far as the volume?
If the noise from those pumps is a problem, the sound will turn off. But we have not, we've operated these at many locations.
Okay.
We have not had a single complaint about the volume of the dispensers.
Okay, we have to ask, ask the questions, that's part of why we're here.
It's a group question.
The public would like to know.
Yep.
Any, anyone else? Tom, Dale, any questions on that? Okay. How about, any other on the, let's see, anything else on the noise? Dean? How about lighting now? We talked about that earlier.
Yeah, I'm sorry, quickly, do you plan to have music or anything on the building playing outside?
There, there will be music certainly inside the building. We typically put eight-haul speakers on the exterior. But again, we try to control that so that it doesn't extend as far as where the fueling dispensers are because of the conflict. We don't run both.
Okay, because again, the concern would be that it's not going to bleed in the street, it's not going to bleed across the street.
That's right.
In any direction.
Larry, what do you?
Pertinent to the lighting, what are your hours of operation going to be?
Yeah, I mean, every site changes. Typical for most of our sites, if I took our sixty-five locations and I said, here's where we normally are, it's five AM to somewhere between ten and eleven PM.
But it's not what's on the form at all, it's eight to eight.
The form says eight to eight on your.
Let's stop that wrong.
Yeah, I'll change that.
Yeah, there's a, John, there's a few other things on that, that form that I came across that I had questions on. How do you want to deal with that? Maybe the board members.
We'll revise the form.
Yep, I would, I would, let's just make those known, and they can revise the form.
All right, so we just write them, send them in to you, and then you can forward them?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the board members, as you review that, if you come across anything as a concern, we'll jot it down, we'll get it over to you, not at this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
We would love to listen to any other comments you have.
I'm sorry?
We would love to listen to any other comments you have.
You?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, let me get, let me get these two first, and then, go ahead.
I just had a question about the lighting surrounding the building. So obviously the, the gas pumps are shining down. Pictures here that you turned in, they're all facing downward, right? They're not obviously shining outward?
Correct, it's all dark, spanking client, cut off, parallel, so it's good.
Okay.
And then there's back shields for anything that's around the perimeter. And that's one of our code requirements.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Lynn.
In any other business, we've never been able to define their hours of operation, it's been voluntary.
Yeah, I only asked Lynn, I wasn't trying to define.
No, no, I just, if, if, if that is something that the neighborhood should know, if they have a right to change, or they have a right to make a pledge that, yes, we're going to be allowed to do?
Because per my, the way they said they were going to run their lights.
Right. Turn them off when they're not open, but if they're open or they're not open, is, can they change that when they have business?
Yeah, the bigger concern was we had wrong times on the DOT form.
I get it, I get it, but those are times that. I get it, I get it, but those are times that you're willing to not change.
Okay, Larry asked me, I'll just bring up a few things real quickly then. On page seven on the form, it says substantial increase in traffic, yes?
That's just the standard, that it's going from zero to some number. So yes, but then we give you the number of vehicles.
Okay, and then, and then it says, commercial activities, truck trips per day. I mean, how often you feel you're going to bring in a gas truck to fill the, do you have any anticipation on that? That, I, I, in the middle?
Yep. We'll have to double check that.
All right, and then, you know, further down, public transportation service, yeah, there's a bus stop within half a mile, I believe. You know, and then same with, I think-
You do have a public site.
Yeah, so that, those, in that box, those need to be tuned up or cleaned up and the parking spaces differ here, 31 here, and it said 23 and all that, that needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, this was the original form, so-
Yeah, and I just, outdoor lighting on page eight is blank, it needs to be filled in. Products to be stored, gasoline, the volume, so you need to indicate the size of the tanks and the number of tanks. What else did I see? On page nine, existing land uses, there is residential close by, and I would check agriculture as well there. And then, I just had a question on page 10, contamination history, there's been no spill on that site in the past? Was it a service station?
So, let me just go, so this is actually pre-populated by the DEC mapper.
Oh.
So that, it restricts, I just want to make sure that, before I say that. So if you look at the, yeah, on the last page, you'll see how that was populated by the DEC, so, no, there are, there are no known.
Okay, and then-
That's how they have to stay.
Further down, it says within 2,000 feet remediation. I believe the old town barn is within 2,000 feet.
The old fire hall. The old fire hall, where the-
It was a DEC site? It's not listed?
It's where the daycare center is now.
Right, what I'm saying is DEC went, the DEC populates us, we don't do that, that's their answer.
Well, all right, it's, I don't think that's correct.
Is it, so it's a DEC site?
The old town barn was a DEC site, it was cleaned up.
You got any questions?
Yeah, correct?
Are you talking about the highway department?
Yeah.
All right, that's across the street, next to Scoops.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what I missed?
They had Teswells there, they had looked through all the rules and regs, and the town bought that land.
Right.
For the safety to the taxpayers in case a developer payment there hit, we would be probably on the hook for restoration. So we try to avoid the very deep pocket expense of purchasing that property. That's across the street, out that way, as you go, or Scoops is on a corner towards Auburn, you see it on left-hand side.
That might be further than 2,000 feet, I guess.
I'm talking, we're talking about the site where the old fire hall was, where Otten Shop had the material, where, if I'm correct, the town also had to clean that up.
Is that correct?
That's right, sir, yes, I am.
Yes, under Steve Parkus, that was, let's put it memory lane here.
Good memory.
That's when they had, was it Cortlandt paving, was there?
Yep.
And it was, it went from OMG into W, you know what? And that's when the town stepped in and said, this is not right, clean it up. And I don't know if the DEC signed up, I suspect that they did, but that would be something that may have to be researched on for that, but I'm sure that the DEC has records of that. And that was where John stepped in.
John?
So, so when the applicant fills out EAF, they just put in some, they, they're required to go online and do that now, they're not hand filling these out. So they just go online and they fill in some very basic information. First and foremost, they fill out project location, and that flags all kinds of things. Wetlands, floodplains, DECs, spill remediation database, all that stuff is automatically flagged now from the state's databases. So, you know, it depends on how much confidence you have in the state, if you think there's a disagreement with that. The most you could ask for would be, you could ask the applicant to maybe put a FOIL request in to see if there's something on that property.
I just want to point out that it's not the applicant's fault that our memory here is better than the memory of the state.
Right, yeah.
Appreciate that. I might be able to do an EDR search on the old-
Okay, I guess that's all, let's go on, let's wrap up that. What else I have? We talked about the hours of operation, and you mentioned there's, it is going to have security cameras on the outside?
Definitely.
And that's running 24 hours?
Yes.
So you'll have that. Let's talk about landscaping and then the fencing between the daycare center.
So she picked it up. Yeah, perfect. Okay, so what we've done is added landscaping, still plans along the street, on the streetscape side, so what we looked at is doing some ornamental cherries. There's one, two, three, four of those. We stayed out of the right way as much as possible. We also did a landscaping area where, you know, where the sidewalk goes by, the actual green space area, there's a good mass, you know, of landscaping there, and that's a mixture of cherries, pyrea, boxwood, pretty much low maintenance, hardy type bushes and trees.
Does the DOT have control over those trees?
No, not those.
On either way, on the north or the east side?
No, the only one that potentially are actually on the east side between the pavement and the roadway, those two cherries that we have there. But they have this planned and they're reviewing that as part of the application.
I believe that's, I forget what the figure was, I think it was eight feet at corners, eight feet back from the roadside on both ways on the corner. John, is that still that?
I've never heard of a standard, usually DOT really doesn't like trees anywhere near the right of way, they call it a fixed object hazard, that's their term for tree.
So if you see, we have a dash line in there, it's a super highway right of way. That's based on the survey that we've given. So all of our landscaping except for those two cherries on the east side are in our property.
Yeah.
So we did point that out to them to see if they have any issues with those two cherries. Keep in mind, on that east side, there's overhead wires, so, you know, we had to keep a tree that's more ground level, and actually that's probably for the better anyway, so we want to have the landscaping at personal level, not towering above it. Then we added landscaping, so we have a fence line all along the west and the south property lines. And then we added, along the childcare area, we added trees all along there to spread out, to break up that fence line, on the other side of the fence, not on our side of the fence.
So what's the difference in the elevation between your property and the daycare place?
It's a good amount, it's a good amount, it's, anywhere between, so the most, it's about six feet.
And how high is the fence for the daycare center?
It'd be six feet on our side, so it's even higher.
The height of the, it's going to be a six-foot fence physically?
Yeah, and we're six feet above that, so they will not have anything coming from our side, they don't see any vehicles, they won't be able to see the building or the dandy or anything from our side, from their side.
So it's going to be, on average, around 12 feet above grade on the side of the daycare center?
Correct.
And how is that drop off going to be stabilized?
We'll do that with probably a geofiber. Typically, what we do is anything that's, anything three or one slope or more, we put a, it's called North American Green, it's a geogrid that we put right on there, so it tightens it up and, you know, we don't want it sloping up either. It's our pavement structure that's uphill, so we make sure that that's stabilized. So as part of our SWIP function, we have to keep this permit open, this construction permit open, until we get 80% stabilized on that site. So that's part of that piece is DEC won't let us close the permit until we actually have that fully stabilized. So it usually takes a year, usually a growing season.
And the way that reads is 80% of every square foot, not 80% over here and the rest of the site is bare.
Yeah, if you throw a hula hoop out, that's kind of what we use, is a hula hoop and you go and look at the hula hoop and see if it's 80% covered inside there.
On the, on the map, C7, the dumpsters, it looks like the double on the south has got a double perimeter line, does that mean anything? Is that fencing different? C7?
Yeah, I see that. Don't think there's any difference. Oh, you know what happened? One of the layers got shifted. So it's the same on both sides.
Okay, and that's, and that's like a six-foot fence as well, around the dumpster? Four-foot fence?
Actually, what's your standard for the dumpsters?
Six-foot, okay. And then we wondered that we were, anything else on the fencing or the landscaping?
I just have a question, just, I'm curious if the shrubs and the trees don't make it due to all the salt from cargo, on a serious note, do you replace that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's part of our function of recycling.
Jamie, what's the fence made of?
That's what I was actually just trying to find the detail.
The fence goes around behind the dumpsters, as I said. That isn't the building, the wood.
I just want to make sure that we're using wood panels?
If I remember correctly, we started out proposing a vinyl fence, and it was a more suggestion that we changed to wood, so I think we changed them to wood panels.
Yeah, because the dumpster, as I see, it says wood panel. I just wanted to make sure.
Are you folks comfortable with that? Did you hear that exchange?
Yeah. Just as long as it's noted on the plan.
Yeah, it's on C10 is our, okay, yeah. On the landscaping, so the dumpster enclosures right now show, was handled, but our note for the fence is vinyl, so if you want to put that all the way, or if you want vinyl, all right.
It's a wood open plan.
Would you have any issue with this going vinyl?
I don't, board members?
Yeah, I think that's vinyls.
I just see wood in an area like this being really high, you know what I'm saying? Wood's only good for so many years.
Right.
Where vinyl, if it gets dirty, you can pressure wash it, you can clean it, it's durable.
And we don't have to go away, maybe a little color away.
Yeah, just my input.
Yeah, whatever's best, I don't think we're, we're-
Anyone, I don't think we're concerned about the wood versus vinyl there, whatever.
Obviously, like the trees, it'll be a part of our site plan approval, if the fence is damaged, it has to be repaired and you're looking for potential for damage with snow removal.
Yeah, you don't have to tell, I mean, realistically, they'll maintain better than you guys live in.
We live that, that's an ongoing concern, but it's certainly something to be weighed, you know, when you make the decision what property to use.
So on the November C7, it's showing Evergreens on the south and the west, I'm assuming this is more updated?
Correct.
And this is showing what on the south and the west?
So we went more with ornamentals than cherry trees. So you, and I'm, I probably can't even pronounce the terminology, but there are two different cherry trees, Quonson and Rosina, my landscapers came up with these.
Yeah, I mean, we hope to have a public hearing for public comments next month, and you may get some comments about inadequate landscaping or more trees, but we'll deal with it if the dust come off.
Well, I think on the, certainly on the west side, given the elevational difference and the fencing there, that the ornamentals may be adequate. On the north and east side, you know, that's the face to the public and we want to keep below the power lines and what have you, and they'll look very, very nice. On the south side, I know that you changed the lot line now, you pushed it down to the south and hanged it. And I know that there's brush there currently and wild growth, so it would be of interest, at least to me and maybe others on the board, what that south boundary is going to be like and if the existing plantings that are there or natural growth are adequate for a stream on the south side.
I know there's also a number of trees on the Tavera property that are going to remain, that will also be on the south side of that fence. And that was part of the conversation that we had with them in terms of where we're going to position the fence and their ability to leave a number of trees, and then we're going to try to supplement with them in between what they've got left on their property as part of our agreement with them.
Good, so we would definitely like to see that shown, and whatever notes you have in your discussions with them would be great.
Yeah, that might be more general notes of supplementing because it's going to be more along lines of, once we get to work, then they'll tell us where they want them going.
So I could pull from our agreement what the numbers are that we would bring to, because we've defined what that number is already.
The two signs out at the street, where are those located on this?
So we actually, there's one of them.
Okay.
And then the other one would be right over here.
So very close to the driveways?
Yes.
Elevationally, like on the east side?
You have your three leads on this, Kevin? They may be figured out.
The street, the parking lot are very close in elevation on the east side.
And they won't, will they be lighted? How would they be?
Backlit, I think.
So what would be lit is the dandy logo and then the price.
Okay, and then once, when the stores close, or the, what will happen with the lights there?
They'll shut down with the, the lights on the facility.
They'll be turned off.
Yeah.
So will the numbers be similar to what's there, or will they be LED?
They won't be LED, that is a skyline system, so it's actually a rotating number. It's illuminated inside, but the number itself's not.
And it would potentially be white, not red.
Correct, yep.
And the stone is going to match the stone on the building?
Yep, same stone, same sill.
And while we're talking about signage now, did you talk with John about the variance? I think if you lay it up all the square footage of your signs, you probably exceed the code, correct?
32 square feet. 48, 32 square feet.
So we have, we do have a sign law and there's a minimum, so you may have to go for variance on the signage. John, can you?
It's correct, John.
Is that right, they will probably need a variance?
Yeah, but I think it may only be on the actual sign base itself, so we have to-
It's just the game, right?
Right, well, and the numbers.
All the numbers come together?
What about the signage on the building?
Uh, there's different sign standards for different types of signs, so there's a different permission for building mounted and a different allotment for freestanding, so I can set all those.
Have you guys looked at over, the sign law?
A bit, but we have to block this down, this is-
Let's, can we just talk real quickly about the signage on the building? Board members have any concern about that? I mean, we may get into so much too detail here tonight, I don't want to get into that one.
My opinion, it's superior to the first, the size of those first presented to us.
Okay.
And all three sides were showing the dandy logo above the entrance, all three entrances.
Uh huh.
And I think each side has the Pizza Cafe Deli letters, which are illuminated under the canopy there.
Okay.
And this is the only face that has the drive-through.
And there won't be no signage in the windows that come and go depending on the season, things like that?
Uh, we, we run quarterly promotions with food, different food service items, but sometimes we throw window posters.
Okay. And what, what sides are those, I mean, what, are they readable from the street or they, they just?
No, they're not readable from the street. I would, I would say they're two by three.
Oh, okay. 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 Any, any other?
No, they won't change the signature red. I already asked.
They did dial it back.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
And I like the lighting, the silo lighting on the outside of the building. I think that's attractive.
That's too bright.
Um, and the last thing I have is back to the sidewalk. I mean, at one, I think at last meeting, we were talking about a sidewalk at least along the north side because there's a commercial property to the, to the west. And I think the planning board was hoping one day to connect this intersection with like the library, you know, where a sidewalk went from the town ball field to the park or the town hall, all the way along that south line of that road. Board members?
We did, we did talk about that. Uh, there's one additional thing that goes after, we can talk about after the sidewalk, but I didn't want to let that get forgotten. But I, I agree with you on what we talked about for the sidewalk on the north side.
Um, let's see, Ed or Joe, has there been any conversation about moving that sidewalk? You know, you, we, the town installed it by the brewery and it comes across to the ball fields. Has there been any conversation, Ed or Joe, about bringing that further south? Or no, be further west?
So that was by, that was part of the agreement that we had to put that sidewalk in. Right, of course, on the, where it goes from there. There was brief discussions, maybe before Joe was on the board. And I said I can speak for him, he obviously has a common aptitude. But these are things that are going to be, in my opinion, incremental, which means when the opportunity arises, you're going to start to put a sidewalk here, sidewalk there, eventually you're going to, kind of like we do with our master plan, put it for the pathways. When that opportunity happens. I don't know, and maybe I need to address this. I don't want to, I don't want to bring into conversation if you're uncomfortable. But along those lines where Rose Harbor is and also where the O P G says, there's a leach field drainage there area. I don't know if the sidewalk would be reasonable to put over that area. I don't know, to be honest with you. So I don't want, don't pull me on this. And point is, is that these conversations is when we start talking about sidewalks. For instance, put the sidewalk to the length of the property. I'm not recommending it, but this is what the philosophy is, of the length of the property that you have, start with those increments.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we need it along the East Shore Drive because the parcel to the south is residential and you're not going to see any foot traffic there. But I could see foot traffic to the property to the west, the daycare center and what else is, what else is in that building?
Well, whatever is going to be there.
I mean, the, the property to the south is residential today.
Right.
Right.
It's, it's, it's zoned commercially, it may not be residential always. And this is, this is the opportunity to, to put sidewalks in. So although Ed wouldn't recommend it, I would.
Okay, Aaron, do you have a comment?
My only comment on a sidewalk is that I just, it's such a crazy intersection that are you really going to encourage that much pedestrian traffic in an area where people can't drive? You know, where it's, it's tricky with traffic is my only, you mean, I have, you know, I live off of this road and I have certainly seen an influx and a huge increase in the amount of people coming to and from the liquor store and with the apartments. But this is a really busy intersection. So are you, are you trying to encourage that many people?
No, I'm trying to encourage people to stay out of the road because I drive up and down that road and there's people walking in the, in the, on the shoulder and they should be walking on the sidewalk.
Well, I think there should be the ability to walk across the road there, certainly. So there should be a crossing area. I, I think that's necessary.
Yeah, I mean, the way it's shown on the plan is, is at a minimum. But I'm questioning the board members, would you like to see a sidewalk running east-west and/or would you like to see a sidewalk running north-south if it's okay with the D O T? Have you guys spoke with the D O T on that at all?
Not sidewalks, no.
Does that impact the speed limit? Having sidewalks does not sway the D O T to slow down the traffic?
No, you, you, this is a, this is the main route between our.
I don't, I don't think forty-five is an appropriate speed limit out here.
And to be honest, you're lucky it's that low, from what I can remember.
Your sidewalk does already lead to the corner of the intersection, which.
That was what you guys requested.
Right.
Larry, what? Uh, I think I would personally prefer to see people stay off the street. And as John said, one of the things that we do when there's an opportunity is try to get these things covered. I'm not a real fan of sidewalks, as you all know. But it's superior to having, having people walking on the shoulder in that place. I agree with Aaron that that's a bad road to have people walking on. But if they're going to walk on it, and they will, I'd rather see them on the sidewalk than I would on the road. Then the other thing is, it's one of the things that the comprehensive plan speaks quite succinctly about, is making the, making the areas in our commercial centers safe for pedestrians as well as vehicular traffic.
So who's going to clear the sidewalk? Who's going to clear the sidewalk?
We don't have a law on that yet.
Does the highway, I mean, I'm just wondering though, if we're making all the high, if we're, if the goal is to make all these sidewalks, I'm curious because I don't know. Would it be the highway department or would it be you folks?
Well, in some cities, the property owners is responsible, are responsible for both the upkeep and the snow removal on the sidewalk in front of, in front of their house. We're a rural town, we don't have the law yet. I'm sure we will once we begin to get sidewalks.
Because if they have them, you have to make sure they're clear.
Well, here's, here's another point, we cannot put the sidewalk in the right of it. So this sidewalk would have to come into the site. Now, if you look at our grading plan, that means they're coming into the site. They're not walking parallel to the road, they're going to be curbed.
That was, that was my question, is it physically possible to put the sidewalks in?
Yeah, to be honest, I don't know if it'd be eighty-eight accessible at that point, but we'd have to try.
And that's on the east side, but.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the north side.
I didn't really.
Yeah, if you want, well, the grading plan, so I'd have to stay, I remember that assumed highway right of it. I don't think D O T will let me put that sidewalk there.
And related to the sidewalk there, what, what about the curbing? What are you, what are you guys talking?
We, we would not do any curbing. That's mainly because what we'll do is we'll collect your stormwater for you. We're going to take the stormwater into our site.
So there's, there is some concrete curbing that does exist on the site now. Would that stay?
No, that'd be down.
That'd all be going out? And the D O T is okay with that?
Well, we'd have to make sure. If they wanted to keep it, we'll leave it, but I don't think they'd want to leave it.
So there wouldn't be any curbing on that, on the site at all in north or east?
Correct. Yeah, it's a funnel back there.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. They're tied on the road.
Yeah, I know you're talking a little bit to the road, but there is curbing on the site.
Yes.
The entrances.
I'm sorry, that's why we're just on the road.
You look at all the other developments that we have, they don't necessarily install curbing along the front, particularly when they've got lawn in front with a parking lot behind. Look up at the other intersection. The, the curbing is where it is because it quite used to be there. And then even then, it was only kind of a lick and a prance.
I think, I think, I think some of the traffic turning right was cutting across that, that parking lot. That's why the state put that curbing in to prevent that, that, you know, shortcut.
Well, that's, that's why it might be that the state will want to see it stayed there. That's what they're going to have to find out.
Yeah, we go through the process.
So your, your lawn area would be at the same grade as the shoulder of the road, pretty much? On the north and the east?
The problem, the problem we got is if you look at the top portion on the north side, you see there's a number of grade lines there that get some steepness to it. So there's a, there is a curb internal to our site, so we know that. But what we'd have to do is, there's that dash line without the, where it says the, I'm going to go up a point if you don't mind. So here's your assumed highway boundary right here, that dash line. It goes all the way through here. We won't be able to put the sidewalk on that side. So what we would have to do is come internal to the site. So when you come internal to the site, because we have to catch up to grades all the way there, we have to do something in here. It would almost have to be like a switchback.
Legally and, and physically, it just doesn't seem to be feasible to put a sidewalk along that north line.
John? I, I think it's worth a conversation with D O T because D O T themselves put out a, a plan in two thousand and one, the Cayuga Lake scenic byway, which shows significant streetscape improvements on this intersection. And I think I've actually sent that to you, Jamie, I can resend it if I haven't. But I think it's, I think it's probably worth a conversation since that shows up on a D O T plan.
We can ask the question?
Yeah. And we're willing to, to partner with you on that. You know, I mean, you don't need to stand alone with that, we can.
Well, no, what I'm just saying is I don't think you have, between the, the pavement structure and getting the sidewalk in there, it's going to be tough from a spacing wise. They may want us to come, if, if that's the case, they may actually push us to, to move our, our pavement section, which, and that won't be feasible.
Well, they may let you work in the road, too.
They might, I, I don't.
You know.
Based on some of the traffic comments, I'm, I'm assuming they're not going to, but we can ask the question.
All right, let's leave that for now. You're going to talk with the D O T, the two of you guys. And then let's see what the, the public, the neighbors have to say, if there's comments about the sidewalk, yes or no. So we'll hear what, what the community has to say.
Increase in, right, foot traffic that.
Okay, so Larry, you had something else?
I have another thing. Lynn, uh, at least one of the last two meetings was addressing the northeast corner of the lot where that is fairly flat to the road. And I think we told you about people having a little bit of trouble staying in the road at that intersection. And he suggested if you're going to have people out in the front of your store, maybe putting some hardscape there for the cars to run into instead of coming onto your property and running into people.
There's some boulders. There's some boulders in the.
We talked about boulders.
Boulders.
One, large limestone boulders or whatever. That's called hardscape.
Some of the hardscape stops people.
Just bringing it up, do you still feel that way?
Oh, yeah. Don't, don't read the Daily Mail or the Post. They do it every day. Okay, anything else, board members?
I, any?
Yeah, go ahead.
Different subject. I'd like more detail on the stormwater storage and how that works.
Well, we got lots of details on that. So we can actually get you the sizing. So what we're preparing now, and I don't know if we, actually, no, we had to submit it to D O T, was the full SWIP. So underneath that, is it, now it actually depends on.
Could you explain to the board how, how storm chambers work, Jamie?
Yeah, that's how, I'm hoping I have a drawing so I can show you.
They put up at the storage at Warren Road and not Hillcrest and, and Warren. That storage has. No, does the storm water underneath.
Oh.
See, there are plastic structures. There's spilt material that's on the top of them and then there's sculpted material underneath. The water comes in.
So what the, what our system typically does in this case is there's a storm sewer collection system, a series of catch basins to capture the water. They drop in, let's call them anything you want. They all get collected to a common area, which we're actually going to put in storm chambers. So if you recall, we had some brading to do in the back. What we decided to do is, well, instead of paying for all this material to come in, what we can do is we put these chambers. These chambers are glorified subject systems, really. They're larger. They're, so if you ever see a culvert pipe, one of those H D P black culvert pipes, it's a half a one. They go on yellow at this time. And what they do is they allow for the volume to be, to be incorporated into the system. So this thing can take, this will be sized or is sized to take up to a hundred-year design storm. When the volume of the water gets in there, what there is underneath is a geofabric and there's a stone layer. So as the water fills into, to the chambers, slowly infiltrates into the ground. This, these, these systems are sized so that we take that surcharge that it can take that time for that water to get into the system and slowly dissipate into the ground. Now, a couple of things you need to know, New York State has very fine requirements for that. Sorry, our P V S are huge with some of the aerial photos. So what happens is we have to analyze to make sure that we're not near groundwater or another limiting zone. So that's either groundwater or bedrock. So there's certain amount of soil, in this case it's two feet of soil at least before you get into the groundwater system. That way, it takes up the pollutants, the contaminants, the fines, you know, the, the salts, that will all get entrapped in the first two feet of, of that soil. So this system, you know, it's sized for multiple storms, you know, one, ten, hundred-year storms. But the hundred-year's a big one for us because we're not distracted anything off, off the site. It's sized appropriately to take some of the, the road drainage. That's another reason why we're saying we're not worried about the curbs being there. And then also, the nice thing is from a maintenance point of view, it's not an open basin that you have to maintain, keep the trees out of, keep, you know, some of these infiltration basins over time, the, the surface ones, they, they silt in. In this case, these chambers do not because you have an actual initial chamber to capture a lot of that material. Also, our catch basins have pits inside them so that they can catch the floaters and, and some silt in there, too.
So that's cleaned out on a regular basis?
There's a maintenance requirement as part of this, of part of our SWIP. There's a, so this three hundred and seventy-nine page document has, has a lot of stuff into it, including the operation maintenance of the system.
Who oversees it? Is the state or the town?
Well, the town can, but it's, it's really the owner. It goes back to the.
No, but I mean, you know, then it's, it's being done, is that reported back to the town or the state?
To us.
The town?
Yeah, that's your that is for.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll execute a SAMRA. You folks have heard that acronym, right? The Stormwater Operation and Maintenance Agreement. And so that ensures that the system is being maintained per the plan.
And just to be clear, that's the catch basins and traps that are being cleaned, not the chambers?
And the chambers.
The chambers need to be cleaned, too? Yeah. Just, just, they have a longer time period.
And then there's a, so when you see the final drawings on those, you'll see that there's a, a different initial chamber. It's the, it's the storm water piece, quality piece, excuse me. The rest is the quantity.
I'm, I'm familiar with them. I've inspected the installation of a few sets of them on different projects.
Yeah, they're, they're great system. We've been working with them for probably fifteen, twenty years. Before, before they came out, so these are actually built down in Waverly, New York. We worked for that, the company E V S, Handcorps. Long time ago, it's not complete now. But we used to actually just use regular black pipe. That's when we first started, it's just perforated pipe. And then they came up with this, this chamber system, which is more economical and better balance.
Okay, Tom, anything else?
So what happens with the five hundred-year storm?
That we're all having issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it would all fall.
And where, and where would the runoff go?
Where would it go now? It follows the same existing patterns. The five hundred, the, the state requirements, the hundred-year. The five-hundred, the state requirements, the hundred-year storm. Now, to be honest, this system's probably, the way we conservatively designed it, it's probably take a good chunk beyond a hundred-year storm. Because when you look at the calculations, we're doing a hundred percent. We're not actually flowing, we're allowed to flow a certain amount of water off our site, and we're not.
Have you done any test holes, you know where the bedrock is?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's part of the requirement. And safety with the subject site, too. So the subject will go through the county health department.
That's correct.
Shallower than you thought it was, isn't it?
Yeah. I actually don't know if I'm, I wasn't, I wasn't the guys out there. Yeah, so you'll see on C8, there's also the Christmas tree in there, too.
Just real quickly, on the interior, for the public, it's here, you're going to be having tables, is that correct?
Yes.
And seating for how many? Roughly?
Angus, twenty-four.
Twenty-four? And products, the hot products, like pizza, coffee donuts, that type of thing?
Pizza subs, bean cup coffee program. Speciality coffees. We're in quarter three, we're launching new flat ground belts.
Okay.
Wraps, salads, bagels, breakfast sandwiches.
So like the wraps and the salads are pre-made and...
Nope.
Oh, they're made fresh?
Yep. We had touchscreen order PPS in the stores, so you can make it any way that you'd like.
Oh, really?
Yep. We're more of a restaurant, we're as much a restaurant nowadays as we are a fuel destination.
Okay, and then the convenience part of it, the, what, just a typical beer, chips, soda, that type of thing?
Yeah, beer, chips, soda, milk, yeah, dairy products.
We have a large package bed cooler.
Okay.
I believe this site, it has eighteen doors, a separate walk-in beer cave, then there's a drink bar, you know, that has obviously a fountain soda, the real cheese shakes, as well as the bean cup coffee, frozen ice drinks.
Ice cream.
And then your typical products, such as your sweet and salty snacks, your candy.
Okay.
Your little scrap of, where you can get pepperoni.
Pepperoni, ham and grove, or, you know, cheese and pepperoni and sandwiches and...
And pizza's gonna be available?
Pizza can be available by choice, or as well as, you know, more original, large and cheap, breakfast pizza.
Breakfast pizza. And so you'll have a pickup window, if somebody wants to order a pizza or whatever, they can...
Just, I just was curious, can you elaborate on your drive-through? I'm curious. So is it just like, what you're describing, is it the dandy special? Or do you subcontract with someone, or what does the drive-through look like?
This is all the ingredients.
Yeah, we have a hundred percent nailed down our menu. It will be probably a pared-down version of our current menu, because we just offer so much made-to-order food that we couldn't possibly handle everything.
But do you have, like, if you will, a breakfast menu, and then in the afternoon, like, sandwich? I mean, what do you, what's normal?
Yeah, there'll be breakfast sandwiches, coffees during the breakfast hours, breakfast pizza, we have breakfast wraps. And then, for lunch, we'll have a variety of subs that...
To be honest here, and it's a difficult question to answer, because we're not operating a drive-through today.
Oh, okay.
We're trying to, we're positioning ourselves and our business to be able to operate drive-throughs.
Gotcha.
And figuring out, because of our extensive made-to-order menu that we have, that we allow a lot of customization of our products by our customers, how do we pare down an offering that can be executed timely?
Through a drive-through.
Took a lot of drive-through window. You know, obviously, it's available for online ordering, pickup, can be done through the drive-through window. You know, coffee, that's easy. But what is the breakfast sandwiches, you know, what's a separate pared-down lunch offering look like?
Yeah.
And those are the conversations we're having internally right now, determining what we can execute.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
You'd probably have twenty-five different hot and cold subs that you can then put anywhere from seven different slices of cheese, or twenty different toppings, twenty different sauces.
Yeah, I mean, I think the board members are concerned is that it doesn't get backed up. Like, if you go to the donut shops downtown Ithaca, or even the one up here, the traffic backs, it backs up right into the street. I know Auburn had a real problem with their drive-through and the donut shop.
Dummies do have those issues.
I think it's, yeah.
This is different.
It's a shortage, too, of staff. I mean, right, there's, the demand is much higher than, I see your point, because even when it's fully staffed, but I think now especially, there's not enough staff to run the drive-through, that these poor folks inside are trying so hard, and the line is growing, and there's not enough people to get the drive-through.
We don't want that either. We don't want a line going all the way up to the road. We want, we'd be able to get through, get it down as fast as possible.
And to be honest, this actually has more curing than a Dunkin' Donuts, whatever. I designed like twelve of them, so.
All right, I think we've gone over a lot tonight. Anything else, board members, or anything else that you...
I have a couple more questions.
Okay.
So I know that neighbors are concerned about idling trucks. And, you know, there is a law that says you can't idle for more than five minutes. Is there any way that Dandymark can make sure that happens? That there's no idling beyond five minutes?
We'll put up the appropriate signage that's required for that law to discourage it. But again, we're somewhat reliant on our customers to respect that signage and the law. We're not staffed, that I can have someone protecting my parking lot, you know, timing trucks and how long they're idling to shut them off after five minutes. So we'll do our best, but we're also not going to go knock on doors and try to...
But you'll have signage. You'll have signage, though.
Yes, we will. Yeah, that's required. We require it.
And, but you will enforce, if someone parks in there when it's closed, that will be...
No, for night parking.
Correct.
Again, there'll be signs for that, and we're certainly not going to encourage it. You guys see vehicles everywhere. When the driver wants to park, they park.
Okay.
They probably do it there today.
Good, Tom?
One more unrelated question, but how are you gonna heat and cool your facility?
I don't know if there's, is there gas in the site or is there propane?
It's either propane or natural gas.
Will all be natural gas. You haven't considered heat pumps? I mean, that's the, that's the way to go in the future, and there's gonna be...
That'll also be one of the questions that the county will ask on their 239.
I, please consider using heat pumps.
Yeah, we look at a number of ways. I think efficiency-wise, we have an MVP that actually goes through the design as part of the layout that you've seen in there, so they'll give us that information. But I have me on Steve.
Okay, let's, all right. Thank you for your time. Hopefully, we've asked the right questions for the public. So we're going to be dealing with declaring a lead agency, and then we're going to have a, open it up for a public hearing. So what we're going to do is, we'll tackle those comments that we've received from the public at the next public hearing, and any comments that the public would like to make, we encourage you to attend the public hearing. So I guess at this point, John, what, we make a motion for lead agency, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I'm undertaking that?
Public hearing is last tonight.
No, no, no.
Okay, just that you...
That must be, yeah. Okay, all right, so yes, we're gonna, we're gonna do that next, after the lead agency.
Larry, I move or accept the resolution to declare the planning board as the lead agency on this project?
Second.
Second, man?
I have a question. On the first paragraph where it lists one, two, three, four, five parcels, you said there were six parcels.
Yeah, there's actually six parcels.
So we need to amend that to add the additional parcel? And do we have an idea of what the proposed street footage is? Is the fifty-six-eight-five the current gas?
That's the fifty-eight-nine-five.
Six thousand, seven, seven.
Uh-oh. Six thousand, seven, seven. Let's say sixty-one-hundred for our pizzas to be safe. It always still less, yeah. It doesn't have to be exact, but if you want to be more than one...
You know which parcel is missing?
Yeah, it's thirty-seven point one, there's one, there's two.
It's a Tepoe Hara property, is this property, yeah.
Can I get that parcel?
See that, John?
Could you say that again?
Thirty-seven point one dash one dash two, it's part of that property. It's a northern sliver of that property, it's also in there.
Thank you.
Good. All right, so then, do you take a roll call, or...
I do. Dale?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, then next, we gotta do, deal with a public hearing?
Set a date.
So is it, how is that done? We just, do we need a resolution or a motion?
Just a motion would be fine.
Motion for set public hearing next week? Next meeting, I'm sorry.
Yep.
It'll be July twenty-fifth, it'll be our next meeting.
It'll be July twenty-fifth for the public hearing?
I'm sorry.
It'll be June twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh.
Okay, so June twenty-seventh. Need a motion to open it up for comments from the public. Dean? Second? Lynn, second? Do you take a roll call on this? Or just the yea or nay?
Just yea or nay is fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? No? Am sting? Okay, so that's, so we have, so it'll be open for comments at our next meeting on June twenty-seventh.
Can I ask how wide of the not ordering pass for the notification of a public hearing?
We typically do six hundred feet. That's, that's the town standard.
I know, but that hasn't always been sufficient in recent public hearings. People weren't aware that we're, you know, pretty close and felt they should be aware.
Would you like to see if, what would you like to see?
I don't know how far.
Can we bring up the map and see what's within six hundred feet?
Go ahead.
This development, proposed development affects the entire town, the entire town.
Well, they are, through the public notice, you're setting the practice, isn't that...
Right, yeah, so there's, so public advertisement is made in the newspaper, it'll be on the webpage. Neighbor notification is done within a radius, so they actually mail a letter to people within it.
I know, and I usually get the letter after, just so you know.
Joe, I know you made a comment in the past about the distance, do you want to elaborate? What do you think on this, in this situation?
I totally have a favorite thing, the wider circle you can, because you want public engagement, this is a very active corner. And so, you know, it's affecting people in Conson Road, it's affecting people, you know, it affects you and me, Al, you know, we live, what?
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go that far.
I understand, but, you know, the wider the circle, the better.
So the board members would rather expand that six hundred to eight hundred, a thousand? Comments, Larry?
I have no problem with expanding the circle.
Okay.
However, I would remind everybody that this meeting is going to be publicly advertised. And as citizens, we all bear a little bit of responsibility for keeping our eyes open on what's going on around us. So if we see an ad that there's gonna be a public hearing that we're concerned about, and we ignore it, then that's on us. So I had to put it up to a thousand feet, and maybe someday we'll have to codify it. But I'm reminding everybody, the public as well, talk to your neighbors, you all know when it's gonna be.
John, what's your feeling?
We bear some responsibility for this ourselves.
Would you like to see that changed to eight hundred or a thousand?
I don't really have an opinion now. I get a little bit concerned about how, you know, how the board draws its lines. You know, what's, typically, the town does six hundred feet, that's your customary distance. What's your, what is your reasoning, what is your threshold for expanding that distance that you apply to this project but not to another project?
I agree.
One thing we talked about, I think it was for the Dollar General, of having a sign placed up there that said that there's gonna be a public hearing and that, you know, we're going through a process. And I, I think this is a good one, to have a sign up there and giving them the information.
I would, I would point out that an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven piece of paper stuck down a cornstalk is not acceptable, as far as I'm concerned. But it was readable from the show.
If you got...
It wasn't there by the time I got there.
I could see.
The distance should be something that the town board planned, because, as you said, right now, the town practice not set up by this board, is to send notices to everyone within six hundred feet. If the town board chooses to change that, it's their pleasure to do so.
That's right, and this board could certainly make that recommendation.
But my point is, I like the idea of having a sign on the, on the property. And I point, and I repeat what you already said, it's gonna be publicly advertised in a paper. Which, which paper?
The Good Journal.
And also, it's gonna be on the town website.
Probably on the sign out in front of the ball fields.
Do we send the letters to people or...
No, we take care of that. Would you folks be amenable to posting a sign?
Two.
One on thirty-four, one on thirty-four.
No, we don't have, we don't have... So, my, my own town, that's what we do, is we, we actually don't send notices out to people. We put the sign up, the notices don't seem too much. But the sign usually is more...
Okay, I think, Zen, the consensus is, is we're probably gonna stay with the six hundred feet, but we're gonna ask you to have at least two signs up that are gonna be readable.
So are you doing this, or are we doing this?
We're asking, we're asking.
I'll send you a format that I've used before.
Okay, so we're gonna have two signs, six hundred feet. Two signs, six hundred feet. And it'll be, it'll be a sign-in, first con, first sign-in, first speak. You're limited to three minutes. And anything else on that, board members?
Just stay seated in the, in the regular seating area. Don't come up front and form, you know, circle up the wagons.
Yeah, it's just one person to speak to the board.
Right, you're gonna address the board.
It's not, it's not a group.
It's not gonna be a debate, we're gonna listen to your concerns and go from there. I guess that's about it, and John?
Just to, just to note that, you know, we can take written comments, but we're not, we're not reading them out.
Right, and again, we encourage written comments. So, hold on, we got two, two hands. All right, ma'am, you have your hand up?
I had just had my hand up when we were talking about the circle radius of notifications. In the past, when Maravilla was up there, you guys did make the circle bigger. And this is a gas thing. And it will be, it's just one of the products. So in the past, you have, past practice, you have made the circle bigger.
Okay, I think, I think the consensus was to stay at the six hundred and put new signs up, and hopefully the neighbors talk with other neighbors and go... Yeah, go ahead.
This is more logistics. You're probably gonna have this public hearing, then take a vote right out of the public hearing, at least that's my experience.
No, not necessarily, no.
I mean, I have a question right now.
Sure.
I mean, frankly, I just think that this is too big for the site. It would seem to be prudent to call DOT and get them to weigh in on this. That's all, a lot of my questions, actually. I mean, you're talking about literally busiest intersection you can.
I can help you with that, sir. So the, the planning board just declared themselves lead agency for Seeker, State Environmental Quality Review Act. As part of that, we'll be doing a coordinated review with DOT, so we'll be saying, you know, we... know, we've declared ourselves as lead agency, we will, we will give them copies of all this material, and be asking for feedback from them. In addition to that, the applicant has, has permits that they require from DOT, so they're working with them on that level right now, also. So we will, we will be soliciting feedback from DOT.
Okay.
Okay?
And trick hammer approval might be the busiest. It's a close one. But, yeah, I mean, that, that's a good, okay.
Yeah, we've been discussing with DOT for three, three months or more. We're actually, there's a three-part permitting process. We're already submitted the second part, so we're pretty much at the final throes of the...
That's awesome, but the public hasn't followed to weigh in on that, the public hasn't seen that, the public didn't know that you were doing that.
Oh, yeah, they did. We, we copied the town.
I may point out that you will have a chance to weigh in on a public hearing. The DOT doesn't accept any comments from the public. They barely accept comments from the town.
Fair enough.
One note, on your, for the sign, your resolution is that the public hearing goes for 6:30, or is there a different time?
6:30.
6:30.
What, would I assign to set public hearing?
Check with John.
I'll, I'll send something.
You guys could get a conversation together on what the sign is.
I just wanted to make sure the time.
Yeah.
Okay, so is this going to be a type one action?
Yes.
So I believe the CAC is supposed to advise...
I believe you are right.
Yep. So that should maybe be part of the resolution.
I think it's automatically part of the decision-making tree, I'm sorry.
Do I need to add into the interested agencies?
Sure.
How will you handle that? Will you, you'll bring that up at your meeting?
I'll bring it up at the meeting.
And then you'll report during the meeting on, on the next meeting?
Yeah.
Hopefully, your next meeting is before the 27th.
We have a meeting June 2nd, I believe, next week.
Okay. I think, I think we're set for tonight. Anything else, folks?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, you've been very helpful. You've been recited to our concerns.
We're going to...
Is the public, is there anybody in the public that wants to weigh in to that?
Well, I was hoping that would be done at the next meeting. Is there any other quick comments?
Meeting seems very kind of the process. Welcome to the comments. You've already received over 40 letters. Here we are, and it looks like you're already picking out building materials.
That, that's just, that's part of the process. So, yes, we're still, we're still in the, you know, we're not the cart before the horse. We're still in the initial phase of this.
I don't know, so I think it's already been said to everybody.
Well, they have to, they have to present something. We can't act on anything until they present something.